Good evening. Welcome to the August 8, 2023, meeting of the Oshkosh Common Council. If the city clerk could please take the role.
Sure. Erickson?
Here.
Ford?
Here.
Stevenson?
Here.
Bulo?
Here.
Hayes?
Present.
Eslinger?
Here.
And Mugawar?
Here.
Seven.
Next up, we'll have the invocation followed by the pledge of allegiance, and we'll be led by Deputy Mayor Erickson.
We come together this evening to discuss the issues that confront our city. May we honor those who have come before us, including the original stewards of this area, the Menominee, and Ho-Chunk nations. Mayor decisions tonight improve the quality of life in our city and for our residents.
National allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, first off this evening, we have a presentation. I'm going to invite up President and CEO of The Grand, Mr. Joe Furlough. He has a special guest with him this evening. This is a return performance, I think, because you were here.
We call them encores.
Encore, but this is an encore performance.
Thank you. Thanks for having me. Tomorrow is the 140th birthday of the oldest asset in the city of Oshkosh's inventory, that is, The Grand Oshkosh. And we have a special guest in town to help us celebrate. Today, we spent some time in the media, and tonight, we're going to spend some time at The Grand Lounge with our celebrity bingo caller. Tomorrow, we go to the senior center, where I think we'll have a very attentive audience for this particular guest. And then tomorrow night, we have a show at The Grand. That show is a pay what you can. It's the first time. I've always wanted to do that, pay what you can. You come to the show, you only got a buck? That's all right. You want to pay 20 bucks? That's all right, too. And... You get paid either way. That's the beauty. You get paid either way. Looking at the demographics of the council and the city folks present and the audience here, I think that our special guest will be familiar to most, if not all, of you. Like me, perhaps you grew up with this guest in your living room. It's been a while since we lost Sherri Lewis, the creator of the guest, who made this person, I can call it a person, right? Famous. But here tonight with us and carrying on the legacy, please welcome Sherri's daughter, Mallory Lewis.
I'm Lamb Chop. Oh, thank you so much. Thank you so much. I want to say that Joe, I love you, Joe. Joe said that The Grand is the oldest asset, but I want you to know that I think that Joe is the best asset.
I travel literally every state in this country, and I have performed in every state in this country. Sometimes I've even been invited back. And Joe truly is an impresario. He makes such good use of his performers. He runs them into the ground, making them do bingo in senior centers, but he takes such good care. And The Grand, Oshkosh, is such an asset that you guys have. It's a beautiful theater. They say that theater is what creates empathy and community. And so I would like to congratulate you guys on the empathy and community that you have created and are continuing to sustain. Tomorrow is The Grand's birthday, so...
Are we going to have a party?
Yes, we're going to have a party.
What's going to happen at the party?
Well, we're going to do a show.
Yeah.
And then we're going to get paid.
Yeah.
Isn't that enough?
No, I want to sing "Happy Birthday." Will you guys sing "Happy Birthday" with me? Say yes. Come on, yes. Yes. Okay. You guys didn't know that your city councilor, Dan, did you? Okay, here we go. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, dear The Grand Oshkosh. Happy birthday to you. David, you weren't singing.
I know, she'll call you out. She'll call you out. So I would like to...
No, I want to do it. I would like to applaud the city council for all that they do for The Grand.
And I would like to applaud the city council for all that you do for The Grand.
No, don't do that.
How come?
Because every time she claps her hands, I blackout.
Ladies and gentlemen, thank you for giving me the honor to speak in front of the city council. Thank you for all that you do to support The Grand Oshkosh. Small theaters around this country are dying, and COVID killed a lot of them. And so what you have is not just a treasure of Oshkosh, but truly a national treasure. And for all of us performers, we really appreciate being able to ply our wares and make people smile and bring community together. So thank you very much.
Thank you very much. And come to my show. You don't have to pay.
Stop it, Lamb Chop. Thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen.
Thank you very much.
Apologies for us...
Nope.
Oh, we got some bingo that goes here.
Have a fantastic evening. I hope it goes well, and thank you again for blessing us with your presence and kicking off a special year for The Grand. So thank you again.
It is not aimed at children. It is aimed, I mean, it's appropriate, as God knows, to protect the grand, but it is aimed at all of you. I know that everybody wishes they could buy a ticket to see Sherri Lewis and Lamb Chop, and I'm okay with that. So I do about half the show, and then I carry stories and show videos. So whichever hairstyle you remember, you're probably the curls. You're probably the curls. You guys are a bit more of the high-poly tail, I think. There's a couple of bobs in there. Whichever mom you remember, she'll be there tomorrow.
Thank you.
Thank you.
This is going to be a tough act to follow, Andy. Just saying. Good luck. So next up, we have Andy Raddick from Communications and City Vashish Social Media Overview. Floor is yours.
Well, good evening, and thank you for having me here. And unfortunately, I don't have Lamb Chop to help me present this this evening, but I will muddle through as best I can. I'm Andy Raddick, Communications Coordinator from Oshkosh Media Division here at the city. And I'd like to give you a global view, overall view, of what the city is doing with regards to social media. And a couple of facts to start out with. In a recent study, Americans are found to spend 120 minutes on social media daily. And I kind of question, that seems like a lot. I looked it up, and actually, that might even be a little bit low. So that's quite a bit. Also, 62% of American adults list social media as a primary news source. So that's kind of an interesting one, too. And really, these are reasons why the city is on these platforms and actively reaching people where they are. So let's take a look at what some of the city's social media pages are. So the city has 24 Facebook pages. I don't know if you were all aware of that, but there are 24 pages from different departments and different subject matter. And so folks can follow, you know, what their interests are and stay up to date with different topics. Really, the City of Oshkosh government page is kind of the hub for them all. So that page shares content from the other pages and also distributes information from city administration. It's kind of the hub. So there's quite a range of Facebook pages there. And then we also have Instagram pages, kind of a variety also. Instagram, of course, is more of a visual platform, skews to a younger demographic. And one item I would point out there is that the Oshkosh Police Department, K-9 Oden, also has a Instagram page. And would you believe, Oden has 42,000 followers? So I think I need to get some notes from Oden of how Oden pulls that off. So also, we are on the Twitter, now known as X, platform. I think a lot of people still call it Twitter. And this is great for quick bits of information. So it's, you know, like updates about things that are happening quick, like weather updates or street closures. It's very useful for that. And so we have a number of departments that are on Twitter. And then also, we have a city LinkedIn account or a few different accounts. And of course, LinkedIn is great for job seekers, for networking, and also information for those who are looking to relocate to Oshkosh. They might use LinkedIn as a resource for some background information. And we have some departments that are there as well. YouTube is our video content, and Oshkosh Media actually has just about 3,000 videos on the YouTube page. So, you know, anything from Oshkosh history to common council meetings. So really, there's a vast library of content there. And then also, the public museum and public library have YouTube video content as well. Nextdoor, I'm not sure if you're familiar with that one. It's basically a lot of neighborhood discussions, neighborhood issues. The only thing there is that only protective services are allowed to have Nextdoor accounts. And so if that changes, we would expand to include other city departments to have a presence on Nextdoor. So circling back a little bit, this graph illustrates the top social media platforms that are used by the public sector. And Facebook is still the most commonly used platform among the public sector. So that's also why we have so many Facebook pages. We reach a wide variety of folks through those pages. But I should also point out that the city is on the top six platforms that are listed there. So we are having a presence where our residents want us to be. Some examples of content. This one is from the City of Oshkosh Government Facebook page. So Bowen Street construction update from earlier this summer, and, you know, just advising folks to please slow down in the work zone, and also giving an update about the status of the project. So we regularly post things such as this. We also regularly use the Oshkosh Media drone for aerial, excuse me, aerial video and photos. So a lot of times, those types of images get a lot of attention and get people to kind of pay a little bit more attention when they get that aerial view. Another example would be our Parks Department, and they are regularly posting updates about all the events that they have. I know that Ann Schaefer over there at Parks is very active with social media and getting the word out about the many events that they have going on. So it's a vital channel for them to get the word out. And then also, our Fire Department. So this post was around the Fourth of July, a little bit before the Fourth of July, and advising people about not shooting fireworks off in dry areas. And so it's a very simple post with a brief message, but very relevant at the time when we were having the dry conditions. And, you know, it expanded beyond Oshkosh because there were over 106,000 people that actually saw this post. So, well, it went well beyond Oshkosh and was very relevant at the time. So we, a little bit of a look behind the scenes. So there are a lot of folks in different departments that manage this social media content. And I manage myself, I work with the city government Facebook page, as well as the Oshkosh Media Facebook page, the city's Twitter, X account, and I do some city LinkedIn posts as well. In Oshkosh Media, the social media channels are looked upon as being another way to reach the public through another media channel. So we actually have our cable television channels, radio station, but we also look at the social media platforms as being another way to reach our residents. And we put the appropriate content there timely, and we try to reach them with what they want to know or what they need to know. And of course, there are staff in all of these departments that are dedicating their time to getting content out to our residents. So another question might be, we have all these folks from different departments that are doing this. Do they talk to each other? And the answer is yes. So there is a social media collaboration group. It's an internal group that meets usually quarterly to discuss social media topics. And so some of those topics would be these. You know, some different things, everything from talking about ideas and trends from other cities to best practices, other things like that. We also discuss spreading management of admin duties across to other folks. Sometimes, if one person might not be available in a department, we make sure that there is somebody else who has the keys to that account so that no one gets locked out or things like that. So we try to manage those roles and responsibilities. And we all use a service called Archive Social, and that allows us to preserve social media records. Social media posts are considered to be a public record. So this service allows us to archive all of that content so that we have it and it's in our records. You know, we also discuss tools that help us to be more efficient and effective with our social media. So there are a lot of different things that we continuously try to implement to help us with that. And so they're just, it's a great group. I enjoy working with them quite a bit, and it's very helpful when we can share some ideas and, you know, talk about, hey, this saves me a lot of time to do this, or, you know, here's something that we found was very effective for reaching folks. And, you know, so then we might try to implement that. So it's been a great group to help us to collaborate a little bit better. So a lot of our activity is based on analytics. So we do take a look at these various factors, you know, especially the reach of posts and engagement. And I myself am always looking at the best time to post so that we can try to reach the most people. And we allow this data to help drive what we do and to help us with our decision-making. But of course, we're always seeking resident and staff input for continuous improvement and taking that input to give the people what they're looking to know. So we continuously work on that. And as far as future plans, and this, I should say, is from the perspective of the Oshkosh Media Division. We're working on a lot of different projects. So one of them is to launch podcasts of our content, city-produced programming. And actually, this is online now, and we are adding content to it. And so we are on the Apple Podcast platform, as well as Spotify and Podbean. So if you'd like to listen to the City Manager's Report in a podcast format, it's now available there, and we will be adding content to those platforms. We also are developing a social media content calendar, and this will allow us to be more complete in the type of information that we post. It's like a master calendar for the whole year so that things don't get forgotten by the wayside, and we can be sure to, you know, bring these things forward. You know, we're also working constantly to improve and to grow our platforms. Again, a lot of that is driven by that analytical data that I was mentioning. So we're always looking at that. And evaluating new platforms as well. So, you know, if there's an option for adding an additional platform, we certainly would be considering that, too. And then launching a regular City Manager short-form video post. And actually, I'm excited to say that we launched the first one last week with City Manager rolloff. So what this is, is we're calling it the City Manager Minute, and City Manager rolloff will do, hopefully, a minute. Quick update about a city topic, depends on what is going on. We can be very spontaneous with it and answer something that is happening right now in the community. And we hope to do these regularly at two-week intervals or one-week intervals. We'll kind of see how the schedule works out with it. But we're excited about that and looking for feedback and hoping that this gives City Manager rolloff another opportunity to connect with residents through these platforms. So really, that's a look overall of what we're doing, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Yeah, go right ahead, Congressman Ressler.
Thank you, Mayor. Andy, when I first got elected, I talked to Mr. Roloff about various posts that are on Facebook. I'm on Facebook, I'm not on the other one, so I can just speak from a Facebook standpoint about things that are going on in Oshkosh. And then, as Facebook does, it takes its turns and nasty turns. And so, but for example, if a street project is going on, and someone says, why is this street project going on? You'll have, because they don't know what they're doing, they want to spend your money, it's going to last for another year. I mean, it's just a total amount of disinformation and inaccuracies. And I asked Mr. Roloff if it's possible to, for someone from the staff, and I'm not talking about monitoring it 24/7. That's clearly not, you can't do that. But just for someone knowledgeable or can get the knowledge of answering these questions so these fires don't get so high and people get obnoxious with this stuff. So, you know, and the plans that you've got there, and they look nice. Is there anything that where staff reviews? And the one I'm thinking about is, you know, you're from Oshkosh, Wen. I mean, that's, I think, clearly the one that where people are the most. So, you know, is there anything along the line of reviewing that on a, you know, once-a-day basis or something like that to see if there's any city issues that people, if they have questions, they can get answered?
Sure, sure. Well, a couple of aspects to that, actually. First, actually, the city does have an account with that particular page. You know, you're from Oshkosh, Wen. So oftentimes, in addition to posting city information on our own platforms, we also go out and post it there as well because we realize that's another forum, another forum where people are. So we try to be proactive in that way with it. Also, if, as you mentioned, it's difficult to constantly be watching it. But if something is brought forward, that there is incorrect information that is posted there, we post the correct information in a courteous manner, and we are very factual in what we are posting there. So we don't get into opinions, into the conversation, other than posting factual information.
Right.
So that's what we look to do. And we are also looking at some potential software that would enable us to receive an alert if there are discussions out there, not only in social media, but also beyond in commercial media, that would help us to get ahead of those narratives. So we're definitely conscious of that, and that's something that we're working toward. But whenever we see disinformation out there, we try to put the facts out there as best we can. And, you know, a lot of times, actually, I see that we have some city ambassadors out there.
Yes, we do.
You know, and they'll know what the information is, and they will jump in and say, well, actually, it's this way. So we try to be mindful of that.
Okay, thank you, Andy. Good job.
Well, no, thank you very much for the presentation. I think, I know, I appreciate the width and the depth of what you're trying to do in terms of social media. And you said it at the very, very end, it's about connecting with the citizens, right? And as many ways as possible, we try to get our message out, keep telling our story, and continue working upon telling it better. So appreciate all the work on this, and thank you for the overview this evening.
Okay, thank you for your time.
Thanks, Andy. Next up, we have a proclamation that's issued. We're actually handing it out tonight, and we have some recipients accepting it. And I'll read it out. This is actually for the Civility Project and declaring that August is Civility Month in the City of Oshkosh. So this evening, we have Sue Ponik and Carissa Buchanan with us this evening. If you'd like, I can read it, and then I'll come on out there for you. So whereas the City of Oshkosh is known as a friendly, welcoming community that offers an exceptionally strong quality of life that attracts individuals and organizations to live, work, study, and enjoy the beauty of our surroundings. And whereas the City of Oshkosh, excuse me, the Oshkosh Civility Project, founded in 2010, is based upon the work of Dr. P.M. Forney in his book, Choosing Civility. And whereas on June 14, 2011, the Oshkosh Common Council adopted Resolution 11-270, declaring its support for the Oshkosh Civility Project and incorporated its principles into council's operating rules. And whereas the Civility Project has been active and engaged in community, regional, and broader efforts to promote understanding and awareness of how communication patterns impact others. And whereas the Civility Project is supporting an initiative during the month of August, 2023, to advance the cause of civility and the shared understanding of the importance of our actions and conduct. Now therefore, I, Matt Mugawar, Mayor of the City of Oshkosh, do hereby proclaim that the month of August, 2023, shall be known as Civility Month in the City of Oshkosh, and encourage people to reaffirm the principles of this Oshkosh Civility pledge, which states, "We build a stronger and more diverse community by actively sharing our ideas and opinions with others in thoughtful and considerate ways. By practicing this basic commitment to civility, we learn and grow from one another, even in disagreement." So this evening, as I mentioned, we have Ms. Ponik and Ms. Buchanan, and... If you have something? If you'd like, you can use this one, too, if you want.
First of all, we want to thank you for posting our sign. Every time someone comes up to speak, this is what they see behind them, if you're watching this on TV or whatever. So that's really cool. And there are actually more than just nine principles. P.M. Forney did probably closer to 21 and beyond. So if you haven't read the book, we have copies, we'll make sure that you get them. But we just want to thank you, the city, for being early adopters of the Civility Project and supporting us through your efforts here at the city council and then other groups within the community. And ways that we get the word out, because it's really hard to measure civility in a community. And sometimes you think that you're just failing at it because people are still uncivil. So what we try to do is we get the word out, we're at farmers' markets. We actually just did a presentation, a workshop, with the peer support team over at Wisconsin Resource Center. They invited us to come and talk about a group of people that have a tough job and could probably be some of the most uncivil people in the world, and they were just phenomenal. So we just really appreciate your efforts, helping us get the word out. And if there's something more that we can do for you or some of your committees, we'd love to come and do presentations or even some trainings. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, we have an introduction of a new staff member. Next up, we have an introduction of a new staff member. I think Parks Director Maurer is here to handle that.
Thanks, Mayor, and Common Council. This evening, I'd like to introduce to you our new senior center manager, Dan Brown. Dan has been with us for almost a month now. The previous manager at the Senior Center retired Gene Wallerman back on July 21st. Dan was fortunate, or we were fortunate, to have Dan on for an extra couple of weeks so he could shadow Gene and then learn a little bit of the center from her. Dan actually graduated from UW Oshkosh with a bachelor's degree in exercise science. He has worked for the Oshkosh YMCA for the past 25 years, 18 of those full-time in various capacities from older adult activities, fitness, wellness, and aquatics. So, a well-rounded background for the senior population, and we are glad to have Dan on staff and just in time for some budget initiation this past two weeks. So, Dan, you have anything?
Good evening, councilmembers. Just nice to meet you all, and I'm glad to be a part of the city. I've lived here all of my life and been blessed to get a lot from the city, and I'm looking forward to being able to help serve the rest of the city as a servant. So, I want to give back and help make things better and keep good things going. So, I look forward to working with you all in the future.
Well, welcome, and congratulations on the new role.
Thank you.
He also makes amazing smoked pickles for anybody. Yeah. Yep. Careful, careful. We have no one registered for citizen statements to council this evening, so we'll move on to consent agenda. I'll take a motion in a second for that.
So moved.
Second. Any discussion on consent? Seeing none? We'll take the roll.
Erickson?
Aye.
Ford?
Aye.
Stevenson?
Aye.
Builo?
Aye.
Hayes?
Aye.
Esslinger?
Aye.
Mugawar?
Aye.
Carried seven?
Next up, ordinance 23-413, amend parking regulations on Ninth Avenue east of South Main Street. I'll take a motion in a second.
Move it.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none? Please take the roll.
Erickson?
Aye.
Ford?
Aye.
Stevenson?
Aye.
Builo?
Aye.
Hayes?
Aye.
Esslinger?
Aye.
Mugawar?
Aye.
Carried seven?
Ordinance 23-414, change yield right-of-way intersections in accordance with traffic flow being reversed on Kentucky and Central Streets. Take a motion in a second.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none? Please take the roll.
Erickson?
Aye.
Ford?
Aye.
Stevenson?
Aye.
Builo?
Aye.
Hayes?
Aye.
Esslinger?
Aye.
Mugawar?
Aye.
Carried seven?
We have two new ordinances on the agenda this evening. No action is anticipated on these. Ordinance 23-415, approve zone change from urban mixed-use district UMU to urban mixed-use district with planned development overlay, UMU PD, for property located at 1514 Oregon Street. Plan Commission recommends approval. As well as, we have ordinance 23-416, approve zone change from riverfront mixed-use district RMU to riverfront mixed-use district with a planned development overlay, RMU PD, for property located at 1,000 Baumann. Plan Commission recommends approval. We have no pending resolutions, no new resolutions. We're gonna turn, we now move to council discussion and direction to City Manager for future agenda items. Future agenda item, we have a closed session planned for August 22 after the council meeting. This will be in regards to collective bargaining strategies. And then, future workshop, budget workshop number two, August 29. This will be at 5:00 PM. 2024 Early Projections and Direction on Priorities from Council. Anything you need to add on that, or is that pretty self-explanatory? We're trying to keep it so that Fitz doesn't speak this evening. I'm gonna keep going here. You're almost there. Almost there. I gave you a chance, you didn't take it. Councilmember announcements and statements. Do we have any reports from council liaisons from boards and commissions?
No, sir.
Floor is yours, Councilmember Ford.
Yeah, we had a good meeting of the Long Range Finance Committee. We are reviewing, you know, for a couple of years now, we've been updating our policies, city financial policies. And the two areas that we talked about moving forward with for this year are TIF policies, given the state revenue sharing changes. There are some implications for TIF, so we want to review our policy, make sure we're consistent with those changes. And then, we're also reviewing our special assessment policy. So, not, you know, not the citywide policy about how we do special assessments, but trying to do a comparison of our specific policies, things like that 12% administrative fee and other things we're referencing, and how that compares to our peers, see if there's something in our policies that might be driving up some of the assessment costs in our city.
Very nice. I don't see any others. Next up, City Manager announcements and statements, 2020, we have the 23 outstanding issues, the 2023 outstanding issues. No updates for Mark on that one?
No updates, Mayor.
Well, that's the most briefest thing I think Assistant City Manager Fitzpatrick has ever said.
He was the one that put the agenda together.
Yeah. Well, with that, if there's nothing else, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Meeting adjourned.